Okay, I think I pick it up from here. Karina Westlow, Acting Superintendent, Director of Student Support Services. And we are starting the meeting at exactly seven o'clock. And I am starting us off and calling the meeting to order because we have reorganization of the committee this evening. And I believe that the first step here is for a motion for a chairperson.
I nominate Bethany Rose to Chair of the School Committee.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Not that I know anything.
Do we have any discussion?
Oh, good job with that.
Okay, and if we could vote with a real hand or a digital hand?
Wanted to have a little discussion.
Sorry, say that again?
Julie, did you want to have a discussion?
Oh, somebody has a little discussion?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, but it's, I was, I was saying, good job, because I was saying to Pam earlier that I often forget that. Like Dan was very good about saying, is there any further discussion? So I was pointing out that that was a great job. So usually we just vote by saying our last name and then I or Nae. So and then we kind of get into a rhythm of who goes when. So I will say Martell I.
That sounds much better.
Heard I.
My UI.
And Jen Taylor just popped in and I'll just get her up to speed. Jen, we're just, I just nominated Beth to be the Chair of the Committee and we were just taking the vote. Do you want to vote? Or do you want to? Yeah.
Oh. Jen Taylor, did you want to vote?
I'm so sorry, I was running a minute late here. I apologize. What did I miss?
Yeah, we have, we just opened and we're doing the reorganization. And the first step is a new Chair for the School Committee. And Bethany has been nominated. And we have a second, and so we're voting right now.
Okay, okay, did, were there any other nominations? No, that's it, okay.
And then we also called for discussion. There wasn't discussion, but.
Okay, well, then I will gladly vote for Bethany as well. Taylor, I, thank you.
Excellent, and now I think you're it, Bethany.
Okay. Um, okay, so we'll.
Unanimous, right? And was I, Bethany, I may have missed something in asking anybody on without camera and full name and that kind of thing for now, because I thought was Jen. And so I'm going to hand that off to you. That may have been something I was supposed to do in the next. No?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll continue down the list of committee positions. Next is Secretary. Secretary acts as the Chair and assumes all of my responsibilities if I'm not available. I'm not sure that I can nominate, but I would like to nominate Julie for Secretary, if there's a second. Okay, so we will do a roll call. Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Heard I.
My UI.
Okay, next is the Union 28 Representative. So there's, as Chair, I will serve on that committee. But we need two other members of the committee to serve on Union 28. Do we have?
Do, who served, who has already served or?
So yeah, I feel like maybe we can just have a, like, quick discussion about all of these positions. Who had been serving and what it actually entails as far as commitment. It kind of says it on here, but for new folks. So like last year, I was on the Union 28. I'm happy to continue that. But I think we need a third person too. Mm-hmm, and I'm happy to, you know. I'm happy to also not continue if people feel very strongly that that's the thing that they would like to be doing. So that.
Maybe, maybe someone should explain about what Union 28 Supervisory does.
Right, so that's a committee where all of the towns come together. There are usually about three people for each town. And we talk about things that have to do with the entire region and we discuss. Let's see. I was just going to look and see if there was really a description of that here. But basically, we talk about budget, we talk about personnel, we like, we talk about instances where we can kind of reach efficiencies by all of the towns working together. Yeah, is there anything?
Well, another.
Usually all of the towns report out. So like, you know, whoever's there for Chutesberry would talk about what's going on in Chutesberry lately. And so we hear from all of the towns as well.
Also, a member, whoever, one of the members of the Union 28 Group has to serve on the Budget and Personnel Subcommittee. And I have two hands up. I have Shannon's dead, well, that's dropped. Okay, so Steve, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to remind everybody that at the last Union 28 meeting, Dan was the only one to show up from Chutesberry. And if somebody from each town doesn't show up, there's no quorum.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Jen, did you have a, your hand was up as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of talk about the different positions that are available and maybe get a better sense of who might serve best in which capacity. Because I know there's, there's other positions too. So it might be a good idea to just really quickly give a, an overview of what those look like.
Sure. So we've just gone through Union 28. The next Subcommittee is Budget and Personnel Subcommittee. So you would serve on this as well as being on Union 28. They meet about five to six times a year to address any union issues that relate to budget or personnel. The next position is the Regional Middle School and High School Representative.
Maybe Steve can actually talk about that, because he has been our representative to this point.
That's fine.
Oh, my. This one meets at least twice a month, if not more, for a good three and a half to five hours, depending on what's going on. Like right now, they are super long and super intense. But it's a lot of fun, so, because I did it for nine years. And they do meet in person and it makes a huge difference, especially at the region where you have nine members to meet in person. So it's so much easier to communicate between each other. But it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun.
Thanks, Steve. The next committee is the Chutesbury Policy Committee. So we need two school committee members to serve on this committee. We work with the Superintendent and the Principal to go through a review the Chutesbury Elementary School policies and make any edits and discuss those before they go to the full committee here for eventually final vote. But there's steps where it goes through. An initial first vote, second vote, and then final vote. Julie and I have served on the Policy Committee the past two years. Next is Capital Planning. I did not serve on this, so I will just read the. Steve, do you want to talk about Capital Planning? That would be great.
Yeah, so the Capital Planning, it does have one member from the School Committee on it. And I've done it for, oh, I don't know, the last eight years or something. But it only, it doesn't meet until sometime in January at the earliest. And there's probably a total of five meetings where the School Committee members' job is to really just push for all of the things that the school wants.
It's a really, and they work with me too, because we, I try to keep everyone in a real up-to-date about everything that we need capital-wise in the building. And we've gotten a lot accomplished.
Jackie has an, has an amazing spreadsheet that she updates all the time. And this time, I might even have an update on a kitchen floor. That would be really cool. But I will say that I've been appointed to the New Buildings Committee. So I, even though I'm not on the School Committee, I will still be a rep to the Buildings Committee. And I'll have the school in my heart.
Thank you, Steve. And then lastly is the Collaborative for Educational Services Representative. This representative attends those board meetings and represents the committee at these big meetings. Dan was always our representative there. Okay, I have two more hands. I have Steve and I have Jen. So Jen, do you want to go?
Thank you. Well, um, so I, first of all, I'm wondering the frequency of both of those meetings. So the Capital Planning and the Educational Collaborative, how frequently do they meet? Do you know?
I believe Steve said Capital Planning was about five.
So do you have an answer for that?
The Capital Planning might meet as many as five times, starting in January through March. And then if we have to have an emergency one after that, we can. And the Collaborative, that meets every three months. And right now, they are doing hybrid. But the cool thing is, now that they've gone back in person, is if you show up at 5:30, you get a free meal. And the food, the food's really good, but it's on, it's only once every three months and the meeting starts at six. And those suckers are over at exactly nine o'clock. They don't win a minute over. And it, it really is important that somebody from Chutesbury go to that one. Because I, I, Dan was the rep for so long. He ended up, he was the Chair for a long time. And then I was the rep from the Regional Committee to that.
Thank you. Are there any further questions about any of the positions?
Maybe people could just say what committees they might be interested in also?
Jen, go ahead.
Sorry, I just was going to volunteer for Capital Planning and possibly for the Collaborative, unless someone else comes forward to do it, which would be fabulous. But I would be happy to do Capital Planning.
I would be, go ahead, Jeremy.
No, I was gonna say, I definitely, I definitely would love to be the representative of Collaborative. I've had some past experiences with them and that feels like a, a place that I could serve well. And I know with all the other things, I'll have to take something else. But one place that I'm a little concerned about with my life this year would be that Regional Middle and High School Committee right now. That feels like, I have a wife who's in nursing school and that feels really scary to me with the idea of not being able to plan around that well.
I could do that. I could do their MRs regional.
I should say, otherwise, Union 28 or, you know, I don't, I'll take another position there too, if needed. But the Collaborative is definitely where I would feel most useful.
Okay.
Did anyone have an interest in the Budget and Personnel? No.
That person would be part of the Union 28 as well. How often does the Union 28 meet?
Once a month.
Uh, Union 28, the Joint Supervisory Committee only meets about five times a year.
Yeah, it's not every month.
No, and the Budget and Personnel is only two or three times total for the year.
I could, I could, I could volunteer for that as well.
Okay, so I think I feel like we might be in good shape to maybe make some nominations then.
I'm happy to continue to serve on Policy.
Okay, great. I nominate Beth to serve on the Policy Committee. Anyone want a second?
Seconded.
Okay.
Okay, can we have a vote or a roll call?
Okay, Martell, I.
Taylor, I.
My UI.
Okay, I think we've got everybody. All right, if we can jump, so I'm going to go in order. I believe we're all set, obviously, with Chair and Secretary. Did we get a vote on Secretary?
No.
Trevor?
We laid.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we didn't, I didn't think we voted on, on, or you guys voted on that. I think the, you.
We segued into conversation.
Discussion about like, all that, yeah, the different.
Okay, so I'm going to run down the list. Can I have a nomination for Secretary?
I nominate Julie for Secretary.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And a roll call? Rose, I.
Taylor, I. Heard I.
Okay, um, we'll now move on to Union 28 Representative. So as Chair, do we need to nominate me, even though I'm Chair and have to serve? Okay, so we're good there. Now we need nominations for two others.
I nominate Jeremy.
Can I have a second?
Seconded.
Roll call, Hayes, or Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Taylor, I.
My UI.
Heard I.
And I need one more nomination.
This is for Union 28, Bethany?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I can do it if no one else can do it. Is it also Budget and Personnel? Do we still need one more? For that as well?
Right now, it's myself and Jeremy on Union 28. We need one more for Union 28 and one of us will have to serve on Budget and Personnel.
I'm happy to do Union 28 still.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nomination for Julie.
I nominate Julie for Union 28 Supervisory Committee.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Heard I.
My UI.
Um, now we need a nomination for Budget and Personnel, which has to be one of the three of us that are serving on Union 28.
Jeremy, did you say you were willing to do that?
I, I did. Yeah, that's fine. Are they meeting, is that, is that an in-person meeting as well? No, okay, yeah, that's fine, we can do that.
I nominate Jeremy.
Seconded.
Hey, roll call, Rose, I.
Heard I. Oops, sorry.
Taylor, I.
My UI.
Next is the Regional Middle School, High School Representative.
I nominate.
Okay, you can second Jen.
Seconded.
Rose, I.
Martell.
Taylor, I.
My UI.
Okay.
I'm not going to vote for myself.
Yeah. Next is Policy Committee, so we need two representatives. Nominations. Are we, they nominated me, so we need one more and voted.
Julie, did you serve before?
I did, I'm fine with doing it again.
Are you sure, Julie?
Yeah, it's fine. Beth and I are used to.
You want to do it, Jen?
I, you know.
Meetings are pretty swift. They're quick.
Julie and I fly through.
I can, I can do it. So it's, yeah.
So Policy meeting, Policy Committee meets at 6:30. It's a half an hour before every School Committee meeting.
Okay.
Start the night at 6:30 instead of seven.
Okay, I will, I, I can, I can do that. I know Julie's been doing it for us. I don't know, it's up to you. Julie, if you want to do it and you're okay with it, that's absolutely great. But if not, I can do it.
Okay, I'm fine with doing that.
Okay. Well, then I nominate Julie for Policy Committee. Thank you, Julie.
Second.
Second.
Rose, I. Martell, I.
Taylor, I.
Heard I.
Uh, next is Capital Planning.
Jen, you volunteered for that one? Okay, I nominate Jen Taylor.
You have a second?
Second.
Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Heard I. You're muted.
My UI, sorry.
Okay, and then next is the Collaborative Representative.
I nominate Jeremy.
Second.
Okay, Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Martell, I.
Heard I.
That's the I, probably I.
Okay. I believe we have successfully reorganized the committee.
Yay.
Welcome, everyone. Um, next, move on to, are there any public hearings? Is anybody here, oh, Caitlin, did you have a?
I believe you do have to vote for someone to be the signer of the warrants. Or put someone in that.
Yeah, yeah, because, yes, you do, because I've done that. I did that for, I don't know, the last five years, when we switched from everyone signing it to just one person. So yeah, good call.
Well, I get help, Gail, Gail reminded me today, so. Thank you, Gail.
So does this entail running to, when we're signing the warrants, warrants, where are we running to, to sign? Steve?
So there's a, every, every department and committee has a mailbox in the upstairs of Town Hall. And just every week or so, just have to walk in there once when it's open and just see if there's anything to sign or if there's anything that needs to go down to Laura at the school.
Unless somebody else wants to do it, I can probably do that.
You do live tantalizing.
I, I live within walking distance of Town Hall and be very silly if I didn't do it. But, um, whatever, yeah.
All right.
I nominate Jen.
Do I have a second?
I can.
I'll second it.
Okay, Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Heard I.
My UI.
Hey. Did we get everything?
I'm sorry, what was that? What was the last position?
Uh, signer of warrants. Okay, I think we have everything. Do we have any public comments, public hearings, anybody? Steve, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for running and taking their seat. And I wish you all luck and it is a lot of fun. But I would like to say that if you can manage every third meeting or so to meet in person, it, it makes a huge difference. But if you can't, then you can't. But if you can, it would be nice. And good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Steve, for everything over the years. Thank you, thank you.
Um, so I do see one hand up, Mary Lou.
Hi, Mary Lou Conca. I, too, would like to thank Steve and I don't see Dan Hayes. So I'm figuring that he has stepped out. I'm not sure about that. Can anybody, is Dan no longer on your School Committee, Dan Hayes?
No.
Okay. So if you were here, I would also be saying thank you to Dan. My question is, if, if y'all could give a status on the school roof, if you could give like an update to what is happening, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Jackie, do you have any information?
That, that's on the agenda later.
We don't usually answer questions in open, public session. That usually is just for people to convey what they're thinking. I, I feel okay doing it now, but I just want to make sure this committee understands that we don't usually respond to people in that first part of the meeting. I'm willing to do it right now, though. So, um, the, the roof is going to be replaced this summer. That's the status.
Wow, thank you, Jackie. It's.
It's, it's on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
It's on the agenda for later, so I'll, I'll answer it when that comes up.
Okay, I won't be able to stay on, but thank you.
Oh, all right, so the roof will be started. And remember, Mary Lou, this is a roof replacement and not a repair. And it's starting on June 26th.
Wow, thank you.
Okay, I believe we are all set with public hearings. Review of the agenda and perpetual calendar, are, are there any? All right, I'm, as far as reviewing the agenda, everybody has it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we will continue on. Are there any gifts?
No gifts. And I know that in the past, Steve has read the, the warrants off. If you would still like the warrants read, I can do that. I have some school committees that have me still read them, some that don't, I just send them aside. But if you'd like me to read them, I can do so at meetings. All right, so we have three accounts payable warrants. Number 3024 from May 16th for $23,159.25. 3025 from May 30th for $12,420.69. And 3026 from June 13th for $30,699.54. There are four payroll warrants. Number 322 from May 1st for $86,591.50. Number 323 from May 15th for $86,312.45. 324. Three twenty-four from May twenty-eighth for ninety thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents, and finally, number three twenty-five from June twelfth for eighty-nine thousand seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And there are no gifts.
Steve, did you have a question?
I have a comment for Jen, so Jim, what normally, what happens is when you go and sign those, you're, you're allowed to use the copier, and what I always do is just made a copy of the top page, and then I made a note on the copy of when I signed it, and then just prior to the next meeting, I will send Trevor the list of both the payroll and the payables.
Okay, got it, thank you, thanks so much.
Okay. And do we need a vote on the the grant, the warrants? No, we're good?
No, if there were grants that we were, um, you might vote to accept grants, but there are, um, no grants for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, we need approval of minutes, um, from our April thirteenth meeting.
And that we approved the April thirteenth minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Taylor, I.
My UI.
Heard, I.
Okay. Moving right along to unfinished business and updates, so this is the capital projects and building process update. Um, we did get the update on the roof, um, are there any updates on, um, the boilers or kitchen floor?
Well, the kitchen floor was approved at town meeting, so we have the money for the kitchen floor, and the library floor is being done this summer, um, as well. Um, and Matt is trying to connect with the company, it's not the company we usually use um, in the school, so we're not as familiar with the people and the timeline, like we are with the other company that we've used for almost the entire building, so, um, we're just trying to get that situated, but those, those two things have been approved and will be happening over the course of the summer and the year.
Nice, and the warrant for the camera was approved too?
Yes, the camera warrant was approved, and that installation will happen in the summer as well. Um, and then it will be the, one of the first orders of our policy committee in the fall to take a look at the, um, those policies.
Steve?
Yeah, so just to follow up on the June twenty-sixth date, so for anyone who's not aware that we're we are, we're replacing the rest, we replaced the gym roof last year, and we are now gonna be replacing the entire roofing system of the rest of the school, and the June twenty-sixth date, I'm not quite sure if that will be the day the engineers show up, but I believe that it's probably the day that the roofing company shows up themselves. And, um, as far as the, the new buildings committee, unlike the old buildings committee, is into making the school look nice, so we are, we've been discussing at every one of our last five buildings committee meetings about the staining and replacing the wood, the, most of it, the red, the red trim and some of the green trim. And it looks like we're going to be going with a different product that will cut, that it's five quarter inch thick material, it's almost like cement board that will go right over all of the rotted redwood, and it will be, it will, it can be painted, and then, like, on the, um, the back of the school where the two bump outs are for the kindergarten and the preschool, those will literally be pretty much replaced, and any of the trim that's down along the ground will be replaced with plastic trim that can be painted so that it won't rot. So, we're gonna make this thing look like a school again.
I am so excited about that, yes, I am so excited about that. I really thank you, Steve, I know that you, we've had discussions, we both shared a concern with over the years, the schools, X, X, the interior looks great, the exterior is starting to look a bit rough, but we were afraid to do it with a, with a roof project.
Well, that was, that was somebody's opinion, we but the other thing is, I'm going to start pushing, once we, once we can get the money lined up for the painting and priming and the wood replacement, is I'm gonna start pounding the pavement about the pavement.
Suzie?
So, I just wanted to check in, um, in that last sentence you just did, Steve, um, the funding for the painting and rock replacement is that, that's separate from the roof replacement, am I right?
That's correct, we took, there was some, in the initial work from Gale Associates, they wanted to include replacing all the rotted wood, and we have enough carpenters on our new buildings committee that knew that roofers aren't carpenters, and the job wouldn't be so good, so we pulled that out of the bid, so yes, it'll be separate.
And so, is there a process still ahead for getting the money for the, um, paint and, and rot replacement?
They're hoping to talk to Gale and Associates when they show up for the roof to see if they're willing to work with us, since they know the building already, to help us go through the process of getting this done.
Right, the estimate or the engineering and then, and then the funding. And I know that because the roof funding, the replacement roof funding came in lower than the, um, finance committee in the town have been expecting, there's, you know, people are still working with some funds here, but they would have to be specifically allocated, they can't just like slide over there.
We're getting ready.
Um, anything further on capital projects or the building? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Um, the next item on the budget is the proposed school committee meeting schedule for, um, FI twenty-four, we need, um, if, any discussion on that and then a vote?
So, it's usually the third Thursday of each month. And then, I think sometimes April and February vacation, sometimes throw that in a little bit of question, so, like, usually when we get to the month before, we talk about whether it should be like the week before or the week after. But I think it's sometimes easier for people to plan when they know their own schedules, so I think that's why it's not built in differently for those months.
When do the other committees meet?
Good question.
This, like, I mean, if this has been meeting on the third Thursday and it hasn't been a conflict, that's a good start, but like, yeah. If we choose a different day or then we have to make sure that we're not scheduling a meeting the same time something else is meeting.
And honestly, there are meetings that, or, I'd like, I think there's one meeting right now that overlaps with this one, so I don't think there's a way for it to not ever overlap, because they generally have to be evening meetings, and we have a lot of, or, like, meetings that happen in the town, but.
I know joint supervisory is always on Mondays, I believe it's like the second or third Monday, uh, in a couple months.
And Steve, when does, uh, regional meet? All the time.
General, generally, it's every other Tuesday from six thirty to, they're scheduled from six thirty to nine, nine-thirty. But yeah, so every, every two Tuesdays, and it looks like they will be going through at least a few this summer, where we try and take July off, but I don't think that's gonna happen this year.
Sadly.
Oh, so the fir-, so your first one is next Tuesday at six thirty.
Oh.
And if you, if you can't make it, let me know, and I would, I would go and I just would abstain for any votes.
Stay at six thirty? I should be able to do that.
Okay. Um, so for consistency's sake, should we just keep this as the third Thursday? As it's been working? Okay, um, can I have a um, vote?
We need, oh, sorry, so, yeah, okay, I seconded.
Okay. Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Taylor, I.
Heard, I.
My UI.
Alright, um, and while we're on that subject, our ne-, our next meeting, um, as you'll see at the bottom of the agenda, is in September on the twenty-first. And policy committee will meet right before that. Okay.
We use the September first?
Huh?
Twenty-first.
September first.
September twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I was like, what? So, okay, thanks.
Suzie, did you have a question?
Yeah, last year, the calendar was that there was no meeting in December or May, and then there's not a meeting in, uh, July and August, and, um, that would work, except for settling the budget didn't, got kinda skewed. It really didn't get worked out until February, which the finance committee, um, likes to get their numbers, so, um, so if you decide to not meet in December, you'd have to make sure that the budget got farther along than it did this year by the time, because it really wasn't ready for January, so it wasn't really till February sixteenth that it got settled. So, just keep it in mind for how it fits in if you're going to skip December.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, moving on to reports, the, um, superintendent's report.
Hi, everybody, Kriina Westlow, Director of Student Support Services and Acting Superintendent. Um, I'll be brief this evening as acting superintendent, um, I just wanna just wanna update you as we get closer to the end of the school year, but first and foremost, I wanna acknowledge the absence of Superintendent Kriina. We are eagerly awaiting her return. Um, in the interim, I am very grateful to have the opportunity to serve as acting superintendent and work alongside our incredible team. We are quickly approaching the end of the school year. It's very fun to think about, um, and to think back about all of the things that have gone, oh, gone on over the school year. Um, and collectively, we have, um, been able to continue to provide for a resilient and supportive learning community, which feels amazing. I think it's really important that we celebrate all of the accomplishments for our students individually and as a whole, um, and take great pride in their ongoing, ongoing success and growth. And I'm feeling very excited, um, about continued collaboration for the upcoming school year and continuing to ensure that our students have the incredible education that they deserve. And lastly, I'm wishing everybody a really, really restful and rejuvenating summer.
Thank you. Um. Next, um, if there are no questions, we have the finance and operations report.
Alright, so, I recently took the school project designers and designers and owners, project managers certification class and passed the final exam, so I'm now MCPPO certified. Um, I learned a tremendous amount, but there was a four-day, a four-day-long sessions about laws and procurement requirements. Uh, this means I can help out with, um, with any capital projects and, um, and it helps my involvement in, in capital projects. The annual town meeting was a big success for the school, the budget and all articles pertaining to capital projects were passed, except for the one talked about earlier with the roof that was deemed unnecessary. Um, and I really love attending the, the Chutesbury Town Meetings. The weather was not as good this year as it was last year, so I do have to complain about that, it was very cold, and he just wasn't dressed appropriately, um, but I love how the, the, you know, the people in, in the residents of Chutesbury ask a lot of questions, and they get a lot of answers, and at the end, they're always supportive of the school once the kind of the communication happens with, you know, with us, and so, um, I really appreciate working with the town of Chutesbury. Uh, the Wellness Advisory Council met for the fourth and final time this year on May twenty-fourth. We have some preliminary areas of recommendations, which we plan on finalizing and bringing before the policy committee next year. Um, some of these ideas are around, um, increased amount of physical education time in a week, although I would say I think Chutesbury may have had the most of the four schools. Um, even though they have the, you know, they're kinda tied for the least amount of time, but Stephen Care is amazing and really uses the time that he has in the building to, and mostly spend with the students.
Yeah, they get PE twice a week.
Mm-hmm, which is fantastic. Increased time for collaboration between PE teachers, nurses, and other staff members across Union Twenty-Eight. Providing resources and promoting community and family involvement and wellness initiatives. Uh, tower gardens to promote collaboration between nutrition staff and classrooms, and there are some grants for that out there, so we'd like to, if it is a wellness, um, initiative, then it might tie well into a grant. And guidance and communication around providing outside food in the schools. Finally, um, I would like to ask the school committee to vote to transfer ten thousand dollars from the Food Service General Ledger Account to the Food Service Revolving Fund this evening. Um, this fund helps support and makes the, the program sustainable. Um, we have more than that budgeted, uh, but the, the program and, um, has actually been, been running really well this year, and we haven't had, haven't, we are needing to use as much as we budgeted for. So, I'd need a vote on that. And it would be, vote to transfer ten thousand dollars from the Food Service Account to the Food Service Revolving.
So, moved?
Seconded.
Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Taylor, I. Heard, I.
My UI.
I think that's it, room.
And that's it for my report, if you have any questions.
Okay. I'll move to Jackie with the principal's report.
Hi, it's me. Um, nice to see everybody, and it's really fun to see five parents of current students sitting on the committee, so when I speak, you really, you probably know a lot of what I say because of all the communications that I, we do with the school, but um, we, we just had our school play, um, and we had, um, a gigantic, gigantic school musical where everybody in the school, um, including teachers, were involved, um, in perform, like ninety-nine percent were involved in performance, and then like five kids that did the program and passed out the program and did the curtain and some of the lights, and, um, it was really fun and very successful, and it was a part, it, I was the artist in residence this year, that's, that's what we did, um, so I, I was the director, and Mike Cortina, of course, obviously, did the music direction and all of the tech, and all of the teachers in the school were super positive and enthusiastic, really encouraging. It was a really awesome thing for our, a- all of us, but it also just really solidified an already strong community, um, and a lot of feedback from, from the families, including some of you, around how nice it was to, to gather together in a community in that way again. Um, you know, we used to do a lot more of that before, before the big C, I call it. Um, and now we're getting back to the stuff that makes Chutesbury even more special than, than it is, um, with, with all of the, um, different opportunities that we provide our kids, so being in a show provides a whole lot of learning experiences. Um, and, uh, they, the students really saw the whole picture from, from auditions to rehearsals to tech rehearsals. From auditions to rehearsals, to tech rehearsals, to choreography rehearsals, to dress rehearsals, to, um. And we're gonna have a cast party on Friday, so they're really kind of seeing like. The whole thing about being in a show, um, and we're, kids are already asking, what, what play are we gonna do next year? I'm like, we'll probably do a play, it might not be the same big huge thing, it might, but it might, we'll see, we're gonna do something, um, something really fun, so. Uh, so that was really awesome and really successful, um. And, um, you know, the last day of school is on the twenty-third, so, um, it's coming up. And I did just want to update the Committee very briefly, you'll hear more about this next year too, but. That, there's been a lot of work on curriculum in the elementary school, um, this year, and I'm super proud of the work and the leadership that Chutesberry is actually bringing to the union around this. Um, and our school has adopted EL education for our core literacy instruction, however. Um, we are deeply invested in the science of reading, um. Sorry about that, the science of reading, uh, that's my dog. Um, stuff, uh, research that's coming out, and we're in, in a lot of PD. Um, with the Hill, with Lynn, with Lindsay Rodriguez, our Curriculum Director, and with our own teacher leadership within our building, which is super strong. Um, really headed by Annie Foley, who's our amazing reading teacher, um, and, uh. We have been getting people coming from all over. Western Massachusetts to observe our teachers teaching EL, because it is a curriculum that a lot of schools are looking into, um. And it's really exciting because we're kind of merging the science of reading. Pieces particularly in our early childhood grades with this new curriculum, and we're, we're supplementing some things, one thing is called Ufly, it's out of. It's out of, um, the University of Florida around phonics and early instruction with phonics. And partnered with that, it's like a stellar combination, and we've been, it's like, it's almost like we're a lab school in a way, and we're, we're eager to show people because our results are really great. With the kids coming up, come, being able to read in our younger grades. Um, so that's really exciting, and it's really energizing, a lot of our teachers who have a lot of experience, who are kind of getting this leadership. Kind of component too, um. And then the other piece is that we are looking at our math curriculum, and we have spent. A good part of this year researching curriculums and piloted, piloting a few units from different ones. And we're really narrowing down on this curriculum called Bridges, which is a curriculum that, again, a lot of schools are starting to look at. Um, and we have been involved in going out into schools in the area that. Use Bridges to do our observations, to kind of see how it is in action and talk to the leadership in the schools to be able to understand what they're seeing from it, and we're seeing positive things. So next year, you're gonna, you know, with your own children, you're gonna start to see maybe more Bridges type curriculum as we, we're not going full-fledged yet, we're not. Fully adopting it, we're, we're really piloting giant units, but we're moving towards wanting to do that most likely next year. Um, so I just did wanna talk to, just tell you about those two curriculum pieces that are really big. Um, and, uh, you know, it's like a full staff, um. Movement towards this, so all of the teachers are involved in the examining of things and the piloting of things and the observing of things and the discussing of things. Um, and we have a pretty phenomenal staff, as you all know, um, and it's been, it's been pretty energizing, um, and really a fun. A fun experience so far, so just wanted to update you on that. That's all I have.
That's a lot.
Well, I think we should all maybe just give some big ups to our musical theater. Extraordinaire from like Ursula to this crazy pirate, like, have you had enough under the sea at this point?
Seriously, it's a lot of sea-based plays this year.
I particularly liked the tons of puns that were involved and the jokes, that was a hilarious extra for me to hear.
I've seen a lot of class plays, but like to see a whole school play like that, a whole school musical was pretty insane, so you guys did a great job with that.
It was also very fun to actually hear the music together, because at home, all I've been getting is bits and pieces, is Jake was running around the house singing. Like, I don't know what's going on, but it made perfect sense and was beautiful last night.
That was a bold choice of Jake to not go with pirate, to go with parrot, because.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah.
Admit he needed to be a parrot.
As you know, I, I was very flexible in what the kids wanted to be, because I just wanted them to be. Involved, so some of the kids who maybe didn't want to be speaking, and, but if they wanted to be a pirate, a, a parrot, or a crow, or a mermaid, or. A lobster, you got it. Get up there with that, that's great.
My kid was almost dancing, it was crazy.
By the way, the sideshows that were happening, like, I went to the earlier one also, and there was this little tiny child. Who wasn't in the flashlight number, I don't know what that one was called, but was standing next to me. Singing her little heart, like, but like quietly, not like in a disruptive way, but like so clearly had been like. Watching and listening and was like, just. Belting out her own little tune that I was like, oh, this is so great, because like even if they're not in that specific number, like they're obviously exposed to it over and over, and they. Get to see like the bigger kids doing some more of that work, so I loved that part of it too.
What about the Jackie sideshow in the middle, where she was coordinating the whole thing?
I know, I actually got some pictures of that. Amazing.
Yeah, definitely amazing. Okay, um, next, Amherst Pelham, um, Representatives Report, I don't know, Steve, if you're still on the line and you wanna.
I can give you a quick one.
That'd be great.
Alright, so I, I will tell you that, the. Administration is a big mess at this point. Um, the junior and senior journalism class have been doing amazing things, and they put out their second article yesterday or the, the day before, I don't know if anyone's. Seen either one of them from the, the graphic, but they're online in different places. And it's pretty scary, the things that they are reporting. Um. But as far as the track and field, we haven't talked about that in about five months, so that means that at least the juniors and seniors. The rising juniors and seniors will not see any new field or track, hopefully by the time the freshmen and sophomores get up there, there'll be something. Um. Other than that, it's. I don't think I have anything else to add, except thank you for letting me do it, and Anna, I'll email you, cuz I, I wanna talk to you before you go down there.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Steve.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you so much, Steve, bye.
Okay, and do we have a Union Twenty Eight Report?
Think Pam said earlier that maybe Caitlin would be willing to say what was up at the last meeting? Did she give you the heads up, or is this catching you off guard?
No. Majority of the meeting was, was around the Superintendent's evaluation, so that was the bulk of the agenda, since, you know, we're, we're past the budget, we're, we're past another thing, so it was. Most of it about the evaluation.
Okay. Um. And the collaborative report, I, I don't have anything. Um. So I guess we'll. We'll, we'll move on and, and wait for Jeremy's. Report. Okay, uh, next is final vote on, um, a few policies, what we've done in the past. That makes it fairly easy is if one person will nominate or move to, for the final vote on the. On each policy, and then another person will set them, they're gonna be the second. And we can get through it fairly quickly.
Julie, wanna do it with me, and we'll just, which would you like to do, you wanna do the so moved or the seconded?
Um, I ca- I can make the movements, and you can do the seconds if you want. So basically, just, just because we kind of have a new crew anyway, um, what happens during the Policy Committee is that we look at what Chutesberry has as a policy, and then we look at whatever the newest MASC. Policy is, and for the most part, we try to keep up with MASC, but honestly, sometimes we actually just. Like the way we in our town are wording things. Um, and so that's generally the only time that we don't adopt the MASC, if we feel like this actually feels like it represents Chutesberry more than a more generic. Policy does, um. So, but, but the point of the Policy Committee is to like go through and just see what the newest. Is sort of try to find the needle in the haystack of like, what is the difference, like what, what is even the difference, and then do we want the. MASC version or our version, um, so later, talking about what the needle was is sometimes hard. That is something that Jen was actually kind of good at keeping the note of like, oh, it was really just like this, or, um, but yeah, those. Policy meetings are a real barn burner, so. Um, and so here we go, um, okay, so that I moved that we adopt. Uh, actually, how should I say this, Trevor, can you help me, I moved that we. Vote on the JIC student discipline.
Yeah, standard, standard language is just you move to approve, and then the policy name, policy, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, thank you, okay, so I moved that, I moved to approve the JIC student discipline policy.
Seconded.
Okay. And then.
I.
Martel, I.
Taylor, I. Heard, I.
My U I.
Okay. Um, I moved to approve the AC non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation policy.
Seconded.
Rose, I.
Martel, I.
Taylor, I. Heard, I.
My U I.
I moved that we approved the GBA equal opportunity employment, oops, I said that wrong, equal employment opportunity policy.
Seconded.
Rose, I.
Martel, I.
Taylor, I. Heard, I.
My U I.
Okay, I moved that we approved the GCF professional staff hiring policy.
Seconded.
Rose, I.
Martel, I.
Taylor, I. Heard, I.
My U I.
Kind of got lost, guys, are we on the GCF professional staff hiring? Now, the next one? That's right. Okay, I moved that we approved the JB equal education opportunities policy.
Seconded.
Rose, I.
Martel, I.
Taylor, I. Heard, I.
My U I.
Okay, and last, I moved that we approved the JFBB. Choice. Policy.
Seconded.
Rose, I.
Martel, I.
Taylor, I. Heard, I.
My U I.
Okay. Got through that quickly. Um. So next on the agenda is future business, um, the Policy Committee is. Meeting on September twenty first at six thirty, we'll have our School Committee meeting that same night at seven. Um, and it looks like Union Twenty Eight is, um, scheduled for September.
There's actually.
There's a quick meeting, right?
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
Um, that, uh, that I, all of us who are on, so Jeremy, Beth and I should attend.
Yes. Yes, that date, I think I have it.
Caitlin?
June twenty seventh at seven.
The, the meeting in September, it will be the reconfiguration, so it's really important for, you know, all committees to have, have representation at it, so. That's an important one, to have three members.
Thank you. Okay, are there any, um, future agenda items that anybody wants to add? No, okay. Um. Well, I will say thank you for allowing me to bumble through. Our. My first meeting is chair, um, I appreciate all of you, um, stepping up and taking on these different, um, committees, it is. A lot of work, but it's great work, um, and for a good cause, so, um.
Good, great.
Well, thank you.
And from a hotel.
Yeah. Um, so unless anybody has anything else, we are. Ready to adjourn.
I have one quick question, just about capital planning, if you know when it's meeting, this is a specific question for me, so I apologize, but, and if not, then.
Didn't you just email me?
Steve say that the capital planning happens in January?
Yes, it doesn't mean till January.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just keep an eye out, will they let me know when it's coming? I just wanna make sure I don't miss it.
I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, okay.
No, I only get invited, they invite me to the ones when they're like closer to like voting yes or no on things, so I can explain it. Um, I don't know, you have to ask Steve.
Okay.
About that.
Okay.
Oh, I have one other thing too, and that is. Um. I think that probably on the Chutesberry. Web page and also on the town pages, we need to get our information updated on there, because I just looked and Dan was on, I think, cuz we don't have a new, so, um, if you. Are okay with it, I will email Grace and maybe, um.
Debbie Lee.
Debbie, yep, to just, um, give her the new information and have that listed. And Trevor, do you send, could you send, um. Grace, do you send her the minutes, I just know she has, she showed me today that she has this like. Appointed and elected, like, three-page document that I think we would need to. Give her the newer information, so.
Yeah, I, I just submit the minutes to Pam, and she does whatever she needs to do with them, so, I mean, in terms of like, um, voting, voting on the new positions, um, I'm sure she would report that onward to wherever they need to go, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Um. And just another question that I don't, I don't know the answer to, but, um, the collaborative. How do we get Jeremy's information there?
I would email Dan.
I think that's a great question.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Dan about it, I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
That aside, some time, Jeremy.
Okay. Uh, we're all learning.
True story.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Just quickly, well, Gemma, I've had you here, um, with the warrants, we can communicate with you when we bring them to the Town Hall, what's the best means of communication for you?
Email is great, um, and I promise I will be more consistent next year than I was this year, I know that there were things that slipped this year, there was a lot going on for us, so hopefully. Next year is, so far, looking like it's gonna be smoother, we will see, you know, it all goes, but definitely email, see.
Email, alright, thank you.
Do we adjourn?
If, yeah, unless anybody has any other questions. No? Okay. Then we are ready to adjourn.